We'll call the meeting to order. This time we have Dr. Yancey, he's gonna give us our invocation tonight.
Father God, we come for you this evening. Ummah hearted, ummah spirit, asking for the strength of the guidance as we do the business in the will of the children of Washington County. Please let our thoughts and our minds be clean and pure. That we will follow your example of perfection, of love, of forgiveness, of patience and kindness. This is our prayer in this sun Christ name, praying Thanksgiving. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Yancey. Let the record show. All the board members are present with deception. Uh, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Norman. I'm looking over that way. Um, Mr. Norman is your old spot. Um, I do want to say before we get started tonight. At this board, I know was in our local paper that, um, we made decisions in closed session about our option, but we did not make any decisions. We're here tonight to make those decisions. When we go into closed sessions simply because of personnel. So I do want to make that clear tonight to the general public. Now we can proceed. Washington County schools will be governed and supported by 21st century systems. Discussion and updates to option three phased in approach for the consolidated campus and needs based application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Member Superintendent. Are you gonna pull that presentation out? So can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
When we, when we left in our, our last meeting, the directive was to look at phasing, look at how we could possibly save money. And we have spent a lot of time doing that. So in the presentation tonight, I'm just gonna really re quickly recap what we presented to you last time. I'll go through that real quickly and then we'll use that as a point of reference for where we are today. So if you have any questions, please stop me.
Yes, sir.
And ask those questions. Y'all are familiar with the county and the schools that you have. Obviously you have a lot of schools throughout the county. About 376,000 square feet, not including the central office. When you include that, it's about 410,000 square feet. You're familiar with the schools and how they are related to the overall county. Not gonna spend any time on that. A DPI did their facilities assessment and they, they made a lot of great points, by the way, and we pulled three of those out. James, by the way, I should have said that James and, and Dr. Bracy have spent a lot of time over the last few weeks continuing to crunch numbers and really make all this really real and make it work. So that's, that's the exciting part about what we're here tonight to do. So DPI had a lot to say about your schools and I know that y'all read the report. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but, but James, I think pulled out these, these highly relevant points generally about the facilities being old and, and having a lot of issues. So there were four options that we were, that DPI recommended that we look at. And then, as you all know, we looked at an additional three options. So in total, seven options. And they were summarized, those seven options were summarized on this one sheet. And I know you probably, it's, you're happy, the numbers are hard to read. I apologize for that. But if you recall, uh, option three, which was a new pre K-12 school for all students, students except the early college, which we would move that back to Roper, was the, was the option that was the most cost effective, seemed to be the most, um, most logical. And of course, the board was, um, had asked that we consider in the, in that option, keeping, uh, Washington County Middle School, uh, and then possibly Crestwell for those to go to the county and be used for community purposes. So option three was also the option that was the most cost effective. It can, yeah, there you go. So option three, if you look notice down at the very bottom here, option three was a negative $48 million. So that means that option at this point in time, that option would save the county over the next 40 years, $48 million. So do nothing and you spend what you're spending, do option three. It saves you $48 million. And the other options, just to kind of summarize, option one would have cost you 75 million. And then on the, uh, on the high, the highest option was option seven that it cost a $98 million. So that's the total cost, including operations over the next 40 years. So you selected option three, which was a negative number, which means it was saving money. So that's really good. Big difference between saving 48 million and spending 98 million. So that was kind of where we left it last time. Let's see. Uh, so the, the map would look something like this, the new pre K-12 school here. And then the early college high school across from the existing building at Roper. Existing community college building at Roper. And then this was option three. And again, I understand you can't read these numbers, but I'll highlight just a couple of them. Year one, option three would have cost 1.6 million dollars. And this was as of last time we met. This is where the math was. It would have cost 1.6 million the first year. And that cost would have gone down every year until it, it got, became a negative, uh, negative number here, which actually is a savings. And then if you go all the way down to the bottom, that's where you end up with the saving $48 million over 40 years. So the pink numbers were costs and the green numbers were savings. And the green numbers total 188 million, the pink numbers total 140 million. So you're saving, you know, in excess of almost $50 million in that option. Before I move on, any questions? That was again, that was where we were. And this was the budget at that point in time. The project, this was last week, we met last week, right? Okay. So last, it's all starting to run together. So last week, the project cost was 115 million. The plan was to get 50 million from the state. And the county would have had to finance $66 million. That was as of last week. And we, since then, we met with the county manager. And we, we learned what number would be, you know, reasonable for the county. And so we have designed the program around that number. And actually what we have is really, really good. I'm just so excited about it. Alright, so. Let's see. There's a, you know, there's a lot of data on the, on the staffing chart. Unless the board members have questions about it, I'd prefer to probably pass over this. And, and just focus on, um, option three and where we are today. So again, this is where we were. $48 million in savings for Washington, for option three. And then we decided to phase it. So we said in phase one, we would demolish the existing Pines Elementary School, build the new pre K-12 school for everyone except the, the students in the early college. And then move the early college back to the, uh, existing Washington County pre K school that's currently being used for pre K. That's phase one. Phase two would be some minor renovations to the early college, uh, high school. We would build the athletic fields at the new high school so that athletic fields are not currently in phase one. That's probably the biggest point to remember. In phase one, we don't, do not have athletic fields budgeted. We also don't have furniture and technology budgeted. And, and then vacation, demolition of the vacated properties. We don't have any of that money in the budget. But what we do have is a school that's functional, fully functional, except for the ball fields, which you'd have to move, go back to the old school to play ball. So this is the site. Uh, this is.
Basketball.
Right, or volleyball.
Or volleyball.
Those can be done in the gym.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we say that.
Yes, sir. And I will show you the gym, the layout of the gyms in just a minute. So this is the existing Pines Elementary School. There, it does appear there's enough property adjacent to that school to, to, um, to locate the new school on that property. And this is, this is what that would look like. The new school will be located here. Parking out front. Football stadium, baseball stadium, baseball fields out here. And again, the football and baseball would be in phase two. Uh, now we did have a conversation with DPI. And they recommended that we go ahead and design that in phase one. In case bids came in low or something happened, they said you might want to go ahead and design it. There's a cost to that and that's a detail we can talk about later, but, um, that's, I thought that was a good idea. So this is what the new, the new school would look like roughly. Uh, this is similar to the Jones County School, which many of you have seen. The main entrance would be here, administration is here. Uh, we have a main gym here. A large main gym here. And then an auxiliary gym. This, this main gym is sized for high school regulation ball. And then the auxiliary gym's designed for middle school regulation ball. So the middle school would use auxiliary gym and, and also probably your elementary school students would do PE in that gym. That would be, you know, their, their multipurpose room, if you will. So we have in, uh, in this, in this plan, we have our, uh, pre K kindergarten and first grade classrooms in one wing together. Uh, second grade, third, fourth and fifth grade in a wing together. We've got your middle school students here and then your high school students here. And along this main spine, we have all of these functions that would be shared mostly between high school and middle school, but elementary school too could use these spaces. You got a weight room, a band room. We've got changing rooms here. Art rooms here, ROTC. Some of your career and technical classes along here. And then we have space out here on the end of the building for a future auditorium. If that were to be funded at some point, it's not in plan right now.
And also, um, I wanted to just make mention when we say the change rooms that it is for is two girls and two boys.
That's right. That's right.
That gives us the ability to be able to host our own tournaments.
Yes. Okay, so, um, the building is 166,000 gross square feet. And again, the map that shows where the schools would be, the new pre K and the early college. Now this is, and again, I know you can't read this. This is phase one and phase two combined. And it shows the net cost. Can we blow this right? The blue, okay, there you go. So this is, this is a really important slide. Maybe, maybe, maybe the most important one, this one, and then one more. So what we have again here in pink is all of our costs and in green, we have all our savings. We have $500,000 a year coming from the county from sales tax. And that means that this program would actually not cost you anything year one. If with the county's $500,000, it's a negative $296,000 the first year. So right out of the gate with that $500,000 county's putting in, it's a negative number. That's really good. But the county is putting $500,000 in here. It does get better. So this is really good. I mean, there's from my understanding, the county, um, it seems like this is a number that seems reasonable to the county. I know the commissioners ultimately have to make that decision, but it's certainly a lot better than where we started, which was 1.6 million a year. Right? That was probably not reasonable, given that, you know, I think a penny in the county raises about $90,000 or something. But this seems much more manageable. So this is our phase one budget. In phase one, the cost would be about $71 million. We'd get 50 million from the state. Uh, the, the school district would put in five million in S R funding. And we would be financing $16.3 million. So that's phase one. In phase two, we're not gonna finance anything. All that would be grant money. So can we? I'll go to the next one. Is that phase two? Okay. There's phase two. Okay. So in phase two, we're building the ball fields, we're putting the technology in. And, uh, we're not borrowing any money in phase two. So the only money borrowed in this program is $16 million.
We'll be repurposing bleachers and all that stuff from the current facilities for the new one, right? Cause.
Well, I know because see we give that to the county for fields and stuff, they would use it. You know, or anybody, you see in this phase in approach with phase two, if I'm not mistaken, that include all of the, that include all your, I mean, we ain't got nothing to repurpose.
What about the, the ones in Crestwood? Do you know, we use those fields, right?
See that field wouldn't.
I mean, we put branded bleachers and stuff down there.
Yeah. I'm just gonna use that for recreation on the end of the county.
So we, you know, we, right now, we're, our plan would be in phase two to buy new furniture, technology, new ball fields. If something happened and you didn't get that money, there may be some repurposing we would have to do at that point.
You know, I think that peace down Crestwell would, if we moved it, that would. That's what I remember. That's right. I remember that.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna move on. So, um, this is phases one and phase and two, phase two together. If we get a USDA loan. And let's go, there you go. Thank you. So if we can get a US, if the county can get a USDA loan, that'll lower the interest rate a little, it'll extend the term out a little. And remember this number and the other option was about a negative 290. It's now a negative 534,000. So now we don't really even need the 500,000 from the county. See, we, we, we've got enough savings here in green. See, the total cost over here in pink is 1.1 million, 1.159 million. The total savings over here is 1.194. So we're saving more than we're spending. Which means we actually don't need any money from the county. If we can get a USDA loan, the county won't have to put any more money. And so now what that means is all that money, this money right here that would be normally going to capital outlay can be used for something else. So, and I know that's a, that's a decision between the county and the board of education, but.
The county would, would, would apply for the USDA loan.
They would apply for USDA loan. And if they get it, it would, it really makes a difference. It saves a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, which for this county is, is a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
Probably trying.
Okay, so we wanted to wrap up with this slide that shows you where we started a week ago with option three and where we ended up today with option three in two phases. So we have 410,000 square feet in the whole district. Uh, we're relinquishing 328,000 square feet here and 368,000 here. Uh, the total square footage in the district is 250 here and 172. So there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of thinking and cutting and being conservative. Now, we had an auditorium originally, we took that out. That was a lot of square footage and that was a lot of cost. So that's something that's not currently in the budget, but you don't have an auditorium now. And we, we kind of felt like it might be pushing DPI just a little too far to ask for that in phase two. That is something we can have a conversation about though, in six months or whenever we, you submit that application for phase two. Okay, so we were getting 50 million from the needs based grant originally, and now we're asking for 64 million because we're getting 15 million, 50 million in phase one and 14 million in phase two. So total of 64 million coming from the state. Uh, the amount to be financed here was 66 million initially, and now it's only 16 million. So with, with your staff, you know, and, and just a lot of hard work, we've, we've cut the financed amount down dramatically. We went from year one costing 1.6 million to a negative 296,000. And if we get the USD DA loan, that's a negative 500 and some thousand. Right? So we're, we're, we're going in the right direction here. And the net cost is about the same. Then it's just about the same in the two options. So saving about 45 to 50 million dollars. So that is, uh, that is where we were a week ago. This is where we are today. The project just makes tremendous amounts of sense. If you can, you can consolidate your schools, bring them together in one brand new state of the art building, like we're talking about. Uh, and, and have it actually not cost the county any money. I, I don't see the downside. And if the board's interested, we could look at some pictures of the Joan County School. We could pull up our website or, you know, whatever y'all, any questions y'all have.
I think that would be real good.
I do that. I would like for you to do that. And I think to, uh, Robin, uh, Mr. Ferris, I think to. What we should do is, um, I would like to, for those that have not heard, opportunity, especially administrators, our board members. Um, I know we're COVID, but maybe Dr. Bracy can set it up where we can make another trip. Um, as soon as we, you know, as soon as we can get everybody together to Jones County. So you can see.
Other than the welding classroom and ag for CTE, was there discussion about future vocational courses like. Yeah, plumbing, you know, yeah, of course, man, that's where we need to be moving.
So here you see a picture of the outside of that building. Again, another photograph of the outside, the main, you're basically at the main entrance. And then this is looking in the main community commons, main lobby of the building. Students really love being in the building more than they love being just about anywhere. You can tell, you can tell they're really enjoying themselves. And this is the dining area. And this is the typical classroom wing. So the wall between the classroom and the, and the learning commons is a, is a glass wall. Teachers can leave the door to the classroom open. And students are free to work in the classroom or to work out in this area. And this is a secure area. So if there was an event in the school, the receptionist would hit a button and these doors here would lock, it'd lock the whole wing down completely secure.
Wow.
Next, is that it? Another photograph of that same space. There's the, the main gym. Your main gym will be a little bigger than this one. So you'll have more bleachers than this. And there's an overall aerial of the, of the building. This building has four wing, three wings. Your building will have four because you have your early childhood classrooms. And we, we, um, we actually had some cost estimates done between the time we last met and today. And we actually think we can get the solar panels within this budget. We have them as an alternate in case things come in high, we might not be able to include them. But we'd like to include them if, if, if we can afford it.
And the reason why I would say I would likely see that done because I like what they did. How they control the, you know, that's part of the CTE program that we saw when we were there. You know, it's a class.
Yeah, they monitor.
They monitored the water usage, the power usage. And so it's a class. So I think that anything that would give this area another edge on something is what we need to see done because we need to give our kids that.
They need it.
They need it. You know, need to see that. So if this, if you can work that within the budget, I would say that's just me. I can't speak for everybody else. I would say I think that that's something that we need to consider.
Yes, sir.
In this, whichever phases, this include like the backup generators for loss of power and stuff.
It does in phase.
That we could repurpose.
We actually have a backup generator in phase one.
Okay, good deal.
Yep.
If there's ever a time we gonna do with this now.
It's now, for sure.
You don't need to drag out, you know, we. And you know, I'm grateful that these young men have come and they showed us how to do it, the way to do it. And they're gonna be with us until the end and through it. So if there's ever a time to do with this now.
I appreciate you said young men.
I didn't want Dr. Bracy to be mad at it.
Coming to Washington County, I was a young man.
Yeah, you were a whole lot younger a few years ago.
You know, so I mean, and, and this is the time to do it. It's really the time to do it. And so, you know, I, I don't know where we go from here.
What I, what I like about it is if an enrollment were to start increasing again, is that the way the buildings are laid out and designed, they can be easily added on to. That's, that's, that's what I like about it, Rob. Because I'm hoping our vocational classes will grow. And we can add on those, those as well.
And, and you know, this, this is, um, it, it's, it'll fit your student body real loosely, let's say that. More loosely at the high school level than at the elementary school level, but because you have the career and technical classes, you know, often with the smaller school districts, you don't have those classes full every period of the day. So if you have more students, for example, that want to take a class, you just, you don't need another room, you just add another class. Another period of that class.
Actually, I answered mine because I was thinking in terms of growth and the areas that we will be able to grow. I would really like to see some growth as well in the county. I think that's a great way to do it.
It is. So just make sure we make note of this solar panels. I mean.
I just wanted to say that, you know, eight years ago, we went with Dr. Bracy. And we saw that school. And that was our desire to have a school built like that for our children. And now it look like it seems like it's coming to pass. But God is good, all I can do.
We have anything, Dr. Carl?
No, we just appreciate your team being so willing to have the numerous meetings and conversations. We look forward to having this presented to the county commissioners on Monday and have their support. And thank you for your assistance with the needs based application as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And I'll just say, you know, and, and to our county commissioners, you know, this is our plea from this board that, you know, we ask for their full support and our county managing this. If there's ever been a time that we need to work together and show the community that we can work together, now's the time. We don't need to be divided on it. We need to do what's best for students and for children. And when we look at this, not only, when we look at a, a new facility, we give our kids another place. And we produce these globally competitive students that we talk about every board meeting. And they come back and give back to this community. And that gives the, so you know, my plea is, and I think all of our plea is together as a, as a unit tonight, is that we do what's best for Washington County right now and the students of Washington County. And that we work together and make this happen. So, you know, I just say, let's, let's do what we gotta do to make it, make it happen.
And Chairman Riddick, um, just a reminder that the needs based application that will submit by March 15th, we are applying for, um, 50 million. We have to wait to hear back from DPI on if we're awarded that, but we should know within a month. We should know by the middle of April, what our, um, result is from our needs based application. result is from our needs based application. And because of Washington County being a tier one county, um, it is zero percent local match.
That's good news.
Thank you so much.
That's good news.
Thanks again, Robert, for helping getting that legislation raised.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's, it's awesome. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the board take action. Yeah, I think you should take action to endorse and recommend that the commissioners approve proceeding with this phased option three.
Okay, board, we've heard the motion. I might just reinstate that we would like the motion on the force that we, approve this phased in option three approach and our county commissioners to, um, go with us on this um, for the consolidated campus and the head needs, uh, and the needs base, um, grant application. Mood and properly second, all in favor? Motion carrot. Thank you. Boarding the motion, is there anything else that claims our attention tonight? Okay, and there's none. We have our regularly scheduled board meeting on next Tuesday. Close session begin at four thirty. Regular scheduled meeting begin at six P M. Coming tonight, moving the motion to Jones. Proper second, all in favor?